Well, it is. Always the last one is.
City River Bank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority meeting is now in session. Today is Tuesday, February 9th, 2016 at 6:00 PM. Please rise.
Heavenly Father Jesus, thank you for that wonderful day that you've provided for us. The day Heavenly Father Jesus and each one of us looks to you for guidance, for leadership. And Heavenly Father Jesus, we just ask that you be with us. Heavenly Father, we ask that you be with this city council tonight. Be with our mayor and each council person as they make their decisions, Heavenly Father, for this city. We ask Heavenly Father Jesus that you be with the staff of the City of Riverbank. For each employee, Heavenly Father, we just ask that you bless them, lift them up, encourage them, Heavenly Father. We know Heavenly Father Jesus that we get our encouragement from you. We know Heavenly Father Jesus that when we turn to you, then we can expect all things to be done in a good and decent manner. We just ask tonight, Heavenly Father, that you be with each citizen that's here. We ask Heavenly Father Jesus that they get their point across. And Heavenly Father, that they get it across in a manner which is pleasing to all. That Heavenly Father, the decisions that are made is made for each and every one. That each and every one, Heavenly Father Jesus, in this community will have a better place to live. We just ask you tonight, Heavenly Father, to bless this community. Bless the great city of Riverbank. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Council authority member Leanne Jones Cruz.
Here.
Council authority member Cal Campbell.
Here.
Council authority member Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Janine Tucker.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here.
Any council authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council LRA board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purpose, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the city council.
Yes. Good evening. My name is John Foley. I'm a resident of River Cove. You all know me. I'm up here tonight, I think, for the sixth or seventh time for the same issue. The way people's water is getting turned off in the City of Riverbank. Now, I've asked you all personally, individually, to call me and let me know what's going on with this. Nobody's done anything, to my knowledge. I read to you Jerry Brown's AB 685 that requires state agencies to consider human rights to water when revising, adopting, or establishing policies, regulations, and grant criteria that impact water use for domestic purposes. It's a universal right for life, he says, for flushing your toilet, for cooking, for taking a shower. The City of Riverbank came to my house last year, over a year ago, shut my water off when I never even saw a water bill. I tried to dispute the $50 late charge. I said that I was going to bring it up to city council. This city manager shut my water off a second time because I didn't pay the $50 after I paid my bill in full. Now, I've come back to you and complained about that. That's $100 I had to pay to have my water turned on when, remember, I never saw a bill. This city manager, in my opinion, I still feel, does not belong sitting in that chair. I don't want her here. And I don't think that you guys are doing your job very well if I asked each of you individually to call me and tell me what's going on with the water department here. I didn't pay my full water bill last month. You know what? They sent me a shut-off notice if I don't pay the difference. Every other utility that I've ever had in my life, and I'm 60 years old, if you pay a portion of your bill, they just add it to next month's bill. Why would the City of Riverbank have to shut your water off if you paid the majority of your bill? Why can't you add it? Why do you have to charge 20% for a late fee if somebody doesn't pay it on the day that it's due? Other utilities only charge 5% to 10%, you're charging 15% to 20%. I don't remember the exact number. I haven't looked at my bill. But you have to look at that. I've asked you repeatedly to do it, and it's been more than a year. All of you know that. Why aren't anybody calling me? Why is my phone ringing and somebody's telling me, "Yeah, John, we're gonna look at it"? Nobody's even told me that. I'll talk to you about River Cove in a bit.
Any further public comment?
President, Vice Mayor, members of the board. My name is Fash Eddie or Edward Jones. Let's be official here. When the farmer's market come up, has anybody thought about the farmer's market yet? I was wondering, it was rather difficult last year for some of us to participate because of the fee was rather expensive. I understand that $50 to join an organization is all right, but to drop a $20 bill every time you showed up was kind of rough. You'd have to sell $20 worth of your product just to take care of that day's fee. I'm not complaining about it, but I thought I'd bring it to your attention so that maybe we could cut it a little bit shorter. I tried to get on it myself last year, but it didn't quite work. I got the permit from the state and everything, but it was just a little too heavy for me to handle it. I'd consider it very much if you guys would see about cutting it down some. I've got an awful lot of flowers. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Charles Neal, 2312 Rio Verde Drive, Riverbank, California. And sometimes it really bothers me when people that will try to say disparaging remarks against someone that's doing an excellent job in this city. I'm one here to speak and tell you that our city manager is doing an outstanding job, doing a job that you couldn't hire a lot of people to do. Above and beyond, I realize I don't have to tell you, you all understand and know her, but I just want to let you know, as a citizen of this Riverbank, this great city, someone who has been around, someone who's knowledgeable of the city, we do have an excellent city manager. And it bothers me greatly when someone tries to, just in some way or another, verbally disparage them for doing the job that they're doing. You have rules and regulations that's laid out there. And I'll tell you, I was a mayor of this city, and I was in the shower, and my wife had failed to pay the water bill, and they turned the water off. And I had one of my kids come down City Hall to pay them, to turn the water on so I could get the soap off of me, so I could come to this council meeting. And then I had to pay 10% too. So, I mean, there's, you know, it's not something that someone discriminates against people for. It's something, when it's laid out in the rules, you either go by the rules or you don't have no rules. You have chaos, and we don't want that in this city. For the last couple of years, we've had an excellent city manager. The council and the city manager have done an excellent job. Continue with it. Thank you.
Any further comments?
My name's David Taylor. I've been a resident of Riverbank for 40-some years. I'm homeless, and I disagree with what Charles just said, but I don't mean to pick on her. I just came by to update the city council on the status of my court trial for trespassing. It was dismissed. Thus, I was never violating the law. Been arrested twice and cited, and I never violated the law. All my property's been taken from me. Everything I own's been taken from me. I've got these clothes I got on. Nothing, nothing. In the coldest part of the year, you know, I ain't so worried about water, water bills, but just staying alive, staying warm, being out the river, not violating the law, and it wasn't good enough. It was not good enough. The contract this city council has with the sheriff, they report to you, they answer to you, and it's still, last time, last city council meeting, I came and I addressed the council about this. Two, three years ago, I addressed the city manager about this, about what was going on between them and me. Nothing's been done. Something will be done about it this time, but I don't, you know what? You don't steal from homeless people. Now, the judge has ordered my property to be returned to me. I hope it is still around to be returned to me, one way or the other. But you flat let the sheriffs steal from me and the city workers who hauled my stuff from the place I wasn't violating the law. I'm so furious, I could start cussing at you right now, but I'm not gonna. But that's the status of that. I hope I get my property back soon. But the law's been broken against me, a citizen of this city. I'm a homeless person. What more can a guy take? What more are you gonna do? You know what I mean? And I'm still an honest person. I'm proud of Riverbank. I'm not proud of the city council. I'm not proud of the sheriffs. No, let's say, they've done a beautiful, great job. They have. But I think maybe it's time they back out. And that's all I got to say for now.
Any further public comment? Seeing none, we'll move forward with the consent calendar. Consisting of Item 3A wave readings, Item 3B, approval of January 26, 2016, City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Minutes. Item 3C, a resolution to approve the pay schedules for part-time classifications effective January 1, 2016. Item 3D, acceptance of the Central Avenue pavement resurfacing and rehabilitation project and authorization to file a notice of completion. Do we have anyone who wishes to pull any of the consent items? Do we have anyone from the public wishing to comment on any of the consent items? Seeing none, I bring it back to the city council for a recommendation and/or action.
I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
I second the motion.
We have a motion to approve in a second.
Council authority member Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
I'm gonna go out of order tonight. It looks like there's a lot of people here for River Cove. I'd like to move with the, start with Item 61, with the concurrence of city council. And so we can get those who have come down for the River Cove so they can have their say. And if they desire to leave, they can leave without further ado. Any issues?
No, sounds good.
Legal? Okay, Item 61, River Cove River Access Review.
Mayor, members of the city council, certainly appreciate so many people coming out to listen to this presentation this evening and to have an opportunity for some dialogue regarding the potential options for consideration about how to address some of the issues that have been going on at the River Cove during the summer months. I'm Sue Fitzpatrick. The city's Parks and Recreation Director will provide an overview of this issue and along with some recommendations for your consideration, and look forward to getting your feedback.
Mayor and members of the council, back in October of 2015, after the summer season, we came to you with survey results that went out through the subdivision. We reviewed those, and we came up with a few options. You asked us to return later with more information on a couple of the options which were of most interest. So, we're back tonight. Springtime is coming quickly, so it's a good time to look at this and try to receive some council direction and listen to what some concerns are. So, just as a quick review for people who maybe aren't as involved in this yet, the subdivision at River Cove is here on the slide. And the highlighted area is the area that's of concern. That's River Cove Drive, and it's along the Stanislaus River. So, what's been happening in the past few years is the River Cove residents have been dealing with cars parked along River Cove Drive to access the river, alcohol consumption, speeding, overall undesirable behavior, litter along the street, levee and beach area, fire hazards, and vandalism. People are digging steps into the levee to provide a walking path. These problems generally happen when the weather changes, usually May through September. And so things have probably been pretty calm for the past few months, but we're coming up to the season where they're gonna start experiencing this again. So, like as I mentioned, in October, we all reviewed the options that we had kind of brainstormed and come up with. We narrowed them down a bit, and we reviewed the survey results that came from the subdivision. It was requested that we come back with more information on, in particular, the process and costs that would be associated with the parking by permit, if we did that throughout the subdivision to alleviate some of the problems. And also, one item that we talked about was fencing the area at Briar Cliff and River Cove because the area there was a major point of access last year, which let people get onto private property where the rope swing was. So, one of the ideas was to just fence off that one area. And so we are coming back tonight with more information on that as well. So, in researching the parking by permit process, Chief Aaron Kylie worked on this using Capitola as a model. We also looked at some ways City Modesto has done this. But the first step would be to order and install signage throughout the subdivision, and our Public Works Department would handle that. If we were to do this through the subdivision, it would cost about $7,000. Okay, our police chief researched the process of implementing the permit process, and that would be done through the police department. We were, last time, talking about how would we do this, what department would do this. So, if the Police Services Department handled this, that's where it would all take place and be initiated. The Riverbank Police Services would process applications beginning in April 2016, and that process, just getting it started, would be about $3,300 for a legal clerk to do that. If fees are collected, if that's a choice we make, these would be collected at City Hall South. Residents would go and provide proof of vehicle registration and then receive their permits. Additional police services would then be required for enforcement for the months of May through September, and the cost of that would be about $15,000. And that would be, some of the work would be done by our officers already on patrol, but there would be costs associated with overtime shifts. Okay, more information on fencing at Briar Cliff?
Let's continue with the parking permit for a second.
Okay.
Are we going to have free parking permits, or we're gonna have it, is it going to be a fee?
Well, that is, I'm presenting two options that will show how we could do that. So, that's something we would need direction on. That would be a decision we would need to make. Is the general fund going to cover that, or would we spread that out through the subdivision? Okay? And I'll be talking about more, more about that in a minute. So, just to go over, the other option that we kind of researched for you is the fencing at Briar Cliff. The Public Works Department well fenced that area that we described to you last year that is a storm outfall area. That's gonna be fenced anyway because we need to do that for liability reasons. But the other fence that we're talking about is up above that would block the entrance to that access. That would just be a small area. It wouldn't be fencing the whole river access. It would just be that west end. And that would eliminate, hopefully, people from accessing that trail that was so popular last year and probably the year before. The cost for just that area of fencing would be about $20,000. Blocking this entrance would make access more difficult. It would make it more difficult for people to do that. But it won't solve the problem of all the traffic on River Cove Drive and the parking there that are accessing in different areas. So, just going further, options for consideration. If we did do the parking by permit, we'll call that Option 1. We would purchase and install the signage. Sheriff's Department would process and enforce. Cost would be $7,000 for signage. Again, it would be $18,500 for processing and enforcement annually. And the pros of this, this would limit parking along River Cove to access the river. Cons, this would affect the entire subdivision and create an annual cost to the general fund. Now, there is the option of not doing the entire subdivision, but the concern then is, would the cars be pushed in and then more people be affected by this? That's where we're not sure where we would cut that off. But we could discuss not doing the whole subdivision and just doing part of it. Option number two would be the same, is doing the parking by permit but charging a fee to the residents. Say if it was a $30 fee, it would pay for itself, other than the $7,000 that we would cover in the general fund. This would be a $30 permit fee annually. If someone was having a party, say they were having guests, they would be able to get additional passes at no cost. Pros to this is that this is an alternative if the city does not have the funding, but the residents really desire this permit process. The cons, this may be an inconvenience to homeowners that are not directly, that aren't living directly on River Cove Drive, and they may not be in favor to this option. Option 3 would be the fencing at Briar Cliff. It'd be about $25,000 cost to the general fund, 20,000 to 25,000. The pros, this may reduce some of the problems and traffic on River Cove Drive, possibly reduce liability to the city. This does not create an annual expense except for maintenance to the fence that we would have. Cons, this will not solve the problem of parking or other access along River Cove Drive. Okay, option number four would be the last option, and that would be to continue as we are. We have provided private security. Sheriff patrols have increased. We've provided garbage pickup. And the residents have told us that has made a difference. It hasn't solved all the problems, but it has made a difference. That costs the city about $4,000 annually. It's already in the budget, so that's a pro. It's already in the Parks and Recreation budget. We've already got that process under control. We can refine it, make it better. The cons would be, this does not solve the problem but provides some additional city intervention. So, I've listed the options here so we could look at them as you want to discuss them, and I know the public would want to talk. Just to jump ahead real quick, some of the staff I've met, we've discussed this, what our suggestion is, just from our input. I'm sure everybody else has input too, is continuing as we are is affordable. If we are having budget challenges already, we can keep doing this. It's already in the budget. One concern we have, as I mentioned, is if we did the parking by permit option, it may cause objection to others in the subdivision. We have to figure all that out. The fencing at Briar Cliff will just solve one portion of the problem, and it is pretty expensive. So, just going back now, I have the options listed as they've been presented. So, you can take a look and give direction.
What were the general comments from the River Cove people after the summer last year? What did you hear? Did they see some improvement?
Yes, well, a little bit of both. Looking over the surveys, we had 37 surveys returned out of about 200 that were distributed. Interestingly enough, there's 37 houses on River Cove, so that made sense. But some of the input was, you know, it went to the extreme. Some said they did not want us to eliminate river access at all. That's why they moved there. Some people said that they preferred the parking by permit. They were interested in that. Others said that they thought fencing the area at Briar Cliff and having the parking by permit would be a good idea. So, there's a mixture of things, but what really stood out was either the parking by permit or at least fencing the Briar Cliff area. There were a lot of comments that said what we have done does make a difference. We are making some headway. There's just, you know, frustration. Some people wanted a gated community. Some people wanted speed bumps. We've kind of talked about all of those things before.
We're gonna have public comment here shortly on this. Are there any direct questions to any of the options? We'll bring it back for discussion.
Okay, 'cause I had some things I wanted to discuss, but I didn't have a question.
We have a lot of individuals interested in speaking. We'll have the comments for three minutes. And if people have spoken, and you just want to agree what they said, you do not have to repeat everything that has been said before. So, do we have any public comments for the River Cove? Please come on up and make your comments.
Well, just a question.
Your name and city of residence.
Elaine Alkus, and I'm a Riverbank resident. I live on Briar Cliff Drive. What is the fencing at Briar Cliff? Is it on the south side of Briar Cliff, or is it on the riverside of Briar Cliff? The riverside of Briar Cliff? Okay. There's an issue with putting that there just because if people come down the river, that's the only exit point for getting out of the river other than all the way to McHenry Park, which is like another three hours. So, if you come down in a raft, or in a canoe, or in a kayak... So if you come down in a raft, or in a canoe, or in a kayak, you can't get out for like another three hours if that's fenced off there. So that's kind of an issue. And we are, I mean, we moved there for the river, so please don't fence it off. That's all.
Any further comment? I like his comments there. Those are pretty good.
John Foley, I live at 2501 River Cove Drive. I saw the results of your survey, and I couldn't believe that only 37 people returned them. So I decided I wanted to go around and talk to everybody. You said there was 178 homes. I talked to at least 96 people, and there's another 60 houses that I went to that nobody was home. What I wanted to see was to have a gated community. If we had that gated community there, you wouldn't have to put the fence up, you wouldn't have to have the extra security patrols, and you wouldn't have people cutting the fence because they still want to get back there. Out of the 96 people that I talked to, seven people do not like the idea of having a gated community. Eighty-nine said yes. So that's more than half of the people that live in River Cove that I spoke to want to make it a gated community. So I think we should look into that option before we start looking at a fence. I talked about the fence. Nobody wants the fence. I think two people that I talked to wanted the fence. Everybody, a lot of people move down there so that they can be by the river, so that they can go fishing and kayaking and enjoy the river. And it's not right that a couple people come from out of town, ruin that for all of us. The city raised the rates over Jacob Myers Park. You guys created the problem for us. And I don't think it's fair for everybody in River Cove to have to pay for a parking permit for something that the city put on us. So you might want to consider that, too. Maybe if you end up, if you don't make it a gated community, you take the money from Jacob Myers Park and give everybody permits out of that money first before the city gets any money. Because it's not right that you're punishing us for something that was caused by Jacob Myers raising their cost over there, or putting a cost on parking. That's all I have.
Thank you. Before we have the next comment, Chief, can you comment on how far back your records go, and what was the year that had the most issues with the river? I believe it was like five years before Jacob Myers Park?
I can't give you the exact year, but yeah, we've had a steady stream of calls for service on River Cove historically. I went back, I believe it was 2009 or '10, and shortly thereafter, maybe 2010 or '11. Don't, don't hold me to that, was the highest call volume. Now, I will say that last year, we saw, what I, what I did was, I went through our records and I, I tried to pull out calls that were specifically related to river activity, because obviously we have call volumes down in River Cove by the folks that are residents and have family problems or, or other issues that are not related to the river. So I went and looked at river-related calls, and between last year and the year before. And I basically found that in 2015, so last summer, we doubled our river-related calls. But I will say that we made a, there was a concerted effort to try to mitigate the problems that we were having. So with, with that concerted effort, that increased effort, we obviously had more calls last year, almost double what we had the year prior. But we, we worked a lot of overtime shifts down there doing enforcement. I know we had, I'll have to look at the stats.
Your initial report to us, you stated that 2006, you had close to 90 calls of that. There was about 60 that were river-related.
I'm not going to challenge your recall, because it's known to be keen. But I, yeah, I know that years ago was actually our highest call volume. So, you know, historically, it changes from year to year. But last year, we had 123 river-related calls. Forty-six of these were parking sites that were issued. Three of these were open alcohol container municipal citations. We had three custodial arrests, public intoxication, a person under the influence of methamphetamine, and another one for DUI. So again, you know, these numbers, some of them are at least a result of the increased enforcement. So, anyway.
Thank you.
I hope that answers your question.
And Mayor, just to add to the chief's comment, to clarify, we, we strongly encourage people to call the police department. Every, every, anytime we had a meeting, anytime we had a phone call regarding River Cove, we strongly encourage people to call the police department if they saw anything. So that would, that would contribute, just reinforcing what the chief said in terms of that, that's why there, there were so many calls last year, because that was encouraged. Yes.
Anyone else for a public comment on River Cove?
I'm Pauline Weaver. I'm from 2500 River Cove.
Can you pull the mic down?
Of course. I'm from 2500 River Cove, directly across from the bamboo entrance. First off, I just, I mainly wanted to say first off, thank you to Sue for all the efforts that you have put forth into this, and answering emails and all that. It has gotten better in, I mean, I think the patrol has definitely made a difference. It has, but I do think that we still do need more. I personally think that the metered parking would, would work. I'm for that. I understand that the people inward on the, in the neighborhood probably won't agree with that, because it doesn't affect them directly. But we're talking $30 a year, not $30 a month, $30 a year, which is $2.50 per month. I don't think that that's a big, large expense to really ask for people. I've seen people spend double, I've seen people spend more than $30 a month on their Starbucks tab. I just, I don't think it's that much of a, of something to ask for the residents. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
You.
Thank you.
You get to speak once. But in this case, go ahead. You have three other people.
I just want to mention that there are three access points to River Cove. That may not be aware. I mean, I know it's not even up there, but for the gated community, it would be great. But you can also get into River Cove from, I believe it's Second Street down Orange, which I'm sure people will figure out soon enough. So gaining the community would be three gates.
Any others? Come on, you all come down here. Let's, let's speak up.
We want to hear what you have to say.
Ann Scott, River Cove homeowner. Can you hear me?
I can, yes.
I'm totally against anything that might financially burden me or inconvenience me for what I don't perceive as a problem down at the river. People have been coming to that river for 40 years, or back in the 1940s, according to an elderly friend I have. And back when it was a dirt road. And the park service didn't do anything about it. The city didn't do anything about it. And as I understand, the property is owned by the city, that embankment. I could be wrong about that. Okay, I'm right about that. Gated communities don't work. People get in anyway. They follow the first car that went through with the code. And permits are a huge, parking permits are a huge inconvenience. I don't want to have to deal with that. And I challenge these numbers that I heard, about 80 people in favor of a gated community. I think if, if a scientific survey was done, and the financials were clearly explained to every homeowner in that area, that it may cost them X amount of dollars, I don't think you'd have that kind of pro response. It would, it would lose hands down, I think. So if you want to, if you want those numbers, go about the survey properly and get, inform every homeowner really well, if it's going to cost us anything above and beyond our property taxes. So I, I just, I don't perceive a problem. And I bet you 98% of the people that are living their lives in River Cove don't even know about this. They, they don't go to the river. They don't see a problem. They don't perceive it. And if you surprise everybody in that neighborhood one day with a notice saying you're going to have a gated community, and it's going to cost you X amount of dollars every year to maintain it, or now you've got to have a driving permit, or parking permit for all your cars, and I've got three cars, two cars and a truck, they're not going to be happy, you know, if you pull that on people. They're just not going to like it. Thank you.
You.
My name is Ken Barkus, and I live in River Cove. And I second what Dan has said. It'll be nothing but an inconvenience for us that don't live on the river. But I say that if people have a problem with teenagers and stuff going there and partying, that we've seen them do, okay, I've seen them come out of there, then we have a sheriff right back here that should be called, okay, and get those people out of there. Instead of trying to put fees on us, okay, that is not our problem. That's a sheriff's problem. That's a law enforcement problem. And I thank you, Sheriff, for everything that you do. But it's a law enforcement problem that these people need to get out of. There's gangs going down there on that other end, the one house that's on River Cove. There's gangs that going down in there. Now, I personally don't have any problems with any gangs that I know of, and I've been there for 16 years. I don't know if this is all made up, or what, or what the deal is, but I've been there for 16 years, and I don't have, we don't have any problems like that down in our area. So, but I second that. I don't want any gated community. That extra money should go hiring extra-duty police officers in. The gated community is not going to stop anybody. My, my daughter lives in a gated community. When that gate opens, 10 cars follow them. So how are you going to stop that? But yet, you're going to, you're going to put permits on me. I got to permit everyone my car, but those five cars that come through there, who's going to stop them from coming through there? How are you going to do that? It's not going to happen. Thank you.
I have the numbers here.
Just submit them to the clerk. I mean, I don't need to hear anymore. Anyone else has a comment on River Cove? All right. I'll bring it back to council for discussion.
In the report, I just have a couple things. In the report, it says 214 homes total are in River Cove. Just want to throw that out there. And the problem with the parking was there long before Jacob Myers Park did any kind of fee structure. It was there long before that. My family, I grew up on Burneville and Orange, which is, as the entrance you go in there. And having all kinds of issues with the river is not something that's new to Burneville and that area. I grew up down there. You, my grandparents would come out and say, get in the house, we got people coming up from the river, because the train tracks used to be there, they used to have a lot of hobos. It's, I mean, that's just, it, it's not something new. And I still have family members that live down there that deal with it. What else did I want to say here? I was kind of, I was a little bit taken back by all the, the expense, and I kind of wanted to talk about, and just kind of throw out there, and maybe you can, why we had to have special enforcement above and beyond. I mean, we already have, we already have stuff going on. And so my comments, and when I read all this, was why did we have to increase just because we were doing permit? I mean, we already have enforcement going down there, and so that's kind of what I, I just kind of wondered why we had to have the special enforcement and all this overtime for four months. It sounded kind of like we were going to hire folks extra, above and beyond. And I didn't think that, just my own two cents, that we really needed to go down that route. So, unless I misunderstood. Okay, yeah. Unless I was way off track and misunderstood it. Because it says two eight-hour deputy shifts for, for, per week for four months totaling $15,000.
Of course, it's directly dependent upon the amount of compliance you get. If, hypothetically, if we did permitted parking, we put up all the signs, and absolutely everybody obeyed them, then we wouldn't have to spend a minute down there. Of course, I don't anticipate that that would be the norm. I think that there would be an educational period there, where people needed to be conditioned to, this is permitted parking only, and it would require extra enforcement. The issue with, our extra enforcement last year cost, it cost to do that, because I had to staff overtime shifts, because the reality is that the peak months down there are the warmest time of the year, typically the afternoons. It's the, it's our highest call volume, you know, typically those warm days in the middle of the afternoon, and that's when our other units are busy. So to have constant pressure or contact enforcement down there to address the vehicles that are illegally parked, if we had permitted parking, would require, it really would require X number of overtime hours to, to commit those resources to dealing with that particular problem. This is just a, really an educated guess, to be honest with you. I'm speculating as to what it would take, but it's, it's hard to pin down, because it's dependent upon the compliance. If people saw the signs and they were compliant, and they drove off, and then we never had another issue, then we wouldn't have to spend any overtime. But, but I, I think that there would be a...
I guess I kind of view it as, you put up a new speed limit sign, or a new stop sign somewhere in town, and at first, you have people not noticing that, and, you know, you kind of get, I mean, there's a learning curve. So I guess I kind of picture that same kind of mentality happening down there.
I agree that that would happen, but I think the, the first year is going to be the most, the steepest cost associated with it. And then I think after that, the following year, and probably the first month in reality. And then once people realize, and the word spreads, you know, less and less, and then the following year, you would probably start out at a lower, you know, threshold, or lower cost, right out of gate. And maybe you would even get down to, to nothing, as far as any overtime costs. It would just be intermittent enforcement by patrolmen that are already on duty. But in order to give it the attention that it would really need to have an impact, a positive impact and a mitigating effect, we, we'd have to staff some overtime. I, I know that we would. The Capitola, they actually charge $25 a permit to help cover their costs, and they do that annually. And they, they, they repeat that every year, obviously. So I think that to say no costs are going to be associated with it is, may not be realistic.
Yeah. I know there's going to be, I know there's going to be some costs. I mean, we already have costs that we have already put in there. And I think one thing that this doesn't reflect is that we already have, maybe, where did you? We already have funds in the general fund that we're already using to the tune, I believe, of $4,000 already. Am I correct on that? Okay. So what we need to look at is, all that is minus $4,000, which we already have budgeted. Am I correct? I just wanted people to make sure they understood that, that we already have a budget item, and we're already spending $4,000 on this already. So those prices that are out there are actually $4,000 less than...
The...
Did I explain it correctly, what I was going with?
I don't know if you want me to cover it, but regarding the clerical help, the, when I talked to Capitola, they have to really front-load this when it comes to the permits being submitted, and maybe verifying the registrations, and then doing the data entry. Once somebody comes to us with proof of registration, what would happen was, one of our clerks would have to enter that data into what's called ICGS. It's basically our database, so that the deputies would have 24/7/365 access to that on the street. They could match that permit with that plate and make sure that the vehicle, the permit went together. So in April, prior to the May through September busy period, when everybody's applying, we would, we would have to have extra help to deal with just that, because of the volume. After that, then our record supervisor was very confident that they, existing records help could, you know, basically work on that in their spare time, if, they didn't really have spare time, but they could prioritize it to where they could pick up that as it walked in, in later months. If somebody added another vehicle to their, their household inventory, or if somebody brought a work vehicle in, now they were getting a take-home work vehicle, and they needed to get a permit, those types of things, those trickle-in permitting's, then, you know, we'd be able to deal with that with our existing staff, so there wouldn't be any additional costs.
One of the issues I have with permit parking is there are parks right there, and you're not going to require permitted parking at a park, because it's...
No.
Any resident can use it.
It's debatable.
And then, at the same time, you're going to have people dropped off at the river and park at the park. So now you're complicating issues with issues. Here's a political football for you. The sheriffs have reserves that cost a lot less if we employed them.
True. And they're, well, go ahead.
My question...
They're already tasked. They, they have plenty of tasks that they're already doing, but go, go ahead with your question.
My question is, would the sheriff permit... My question is, would the sheriff permit us to use the reserves during the peak periods?
I'm sure he would permit it, it's a matter of whether we have the reserves to add additional...
I know a lot of reserves that were complaining they didn't get the hours required for training and for work. And there was a political football with that.
Okay, well, yeah, the sheriff would have to answer that. I can't answer it.
That might be an option to help cut down on costs and increase our patrol options.
We have another, we have another scenario out there too, with the new, I'm going to love me for this one, with the new water permits, with the new water meters that are going in. I know it's cutting down on man-hours reading the meters every two months, and so there might be some, is where I'm going with that one also?
I do. But I can't, I'm not going to touch it.
So I'll touch that. At this point, we have so many, so many maintenance issues associated with the water system that really need to be dealt with, that to divert them from the primary focus of our water system would not be, would not be wise. In addition to that, as everybody at the diocese knows, the city is under the microscope of the state water board. We're under an executive order to reduce water, and associated with that executive order is requirements to focus on water conservation, to implement leak detection, et cetera. So we really, more than anything, we need to probably put more resources towards water to divert it. Although I do appreciate, council member, your creative thinking because that, because you know what, in some cases, that could actually work. In this particular case, I would recommend against it, but you know, in other cases, it could work.
We're just looking at something that, I don't know, just brainstorming.
In all honesty, I don't have a strong recommendation one way or the other. This is really a decision for the River Cove residents to be involved in and try to make. It's just that I don't want to set our services up for failure where I say, well, it's not going to cost anything, and we're, yeah, we'll do whatever it takes. In the meantime, we're not able, we're not able to, we're not able to do what's required of us.
I have another question, since you're up there, chief.
Sure.
What about the rest of the citizens of Riverbank? How is this parking permit, if they go, is it going to affect them? Some of the people that live in Riverbank like to come down, do fishing, and they do the right things. Can you comment on that? Are they allowed to get a permit because they're citizens of Riverbank too? Or is this just for River Cove?
It's really, the design is up to whatever the city wants and the residents. But I know Capitola, they do it by residence. You either have a vehicle registered to a residence in that neighborhood, or you don't, with the exception of the work vehicles. And again, they require a letter, an official letterhead that states that that vehicle is using the course and scope of employment, and it is to be secured at that residence when they're not working.
If I'm not mistaken, in Capitola, they have access, if they don't park right there at River Cove, to the beach or the ocean at other parking spots.
They do, yes.
Yeah. That's one of our problems, we don't have enough access points for that.
We do, if you consider Jacob Myers Park one.
Jacob Myers Park is an option for the rafting and some of the others. Okay, any other comments?
Yeah, I had a question about the private patrols. We increased private patrolling also, right? Didn't we do that too?
Yes, I think that, well, I don't know if you have another question, but yes, the issue with having ONTEL take this on is that they don't, they don't have access to our records, nor can they by law. So they won't have the ability to run license plates or, and cross-reference to make sure that this permit goes to that vehicle. So that's, that would definitely be an issue in terms of them trying to enforce it.
But they're able to make calls if residents, I mean, you wouldn't know if a resident called, but they would be able to make calls saying that they see something or...
Sure.
You know?
Sure.
So you might get even more calls, additional calls.
Right.
I'll go on record as saying, I just, I think option four is the best option personally. And I certainly want to do what the majority of the residents want to do and what we're hearing them. They have the opportunity tonight to get up and speak about what they want. But I think that, and it's not just because it's the cheapest option, but I think that it's sort of a be careful what you wish for kind of a situation with the permits. I think the permit, parking by permit creates as many problems as it does solutions, and I'm really concerned about that. You know, even the ones who indicate that they want it, I think later on, you may regret that decision. So I'm a little bit concerned about that. And I think that option four, it sounds like we're making a difference. Maybe there's room for improvement there. We can do some things to make it even better. But I think that that's probably the best solution going forward at this, at this point in time, anyway.
I agree, but I do have a question around the bamboo. Are we fencing a part of that off?
The only area that we'll be fencing is as you go down the trail, there is a storm outfall that Public Works will be fencing. And they tried to do that, and it was destroyed last year. They're going to do some better fencing there just because of the, it drops into a pit, and we need to secure that. So that's going to be done already.
That's being done no matter what.
Yes.
Would that limit access to the river and along that area?
No, because there'll be a trail that goes to the right of the pit and to the left. So they could still get down there. It's just going to make us feel better about securing that area there.
Well, I think too that whatever we do, this, you know, as you know, is going to affect the whole entire subdivision so that whatever the majority of the residents want, we can't just, our options cannot just benefit just a few. So I think we need to think hard about how we can best make our choices to benefit the whole subdivision, everyone.
I think Councilman Tucker summed it up. I would go along with her. I feel option four is the best option that can do the best good for what you're putting into it and be the most effective.
I do too.
I do too, but I don't believe $4,000 is the only amount. If it costs more later on, we have to at least cover the cost to keep it safe down there as much as possible, try to minimize the amount. We're back here at council?
Can I make another comment?
No, sir.
I talked to the people down there.
Okay, and I appreciate the comments. So the direction, this is just for a direction? Or do we have to make a formal? We've had public comments, sir.
Do you let this statement make a second comment? I just want to bring it to your attention. I talked to the people down there, and the people would rather have it a gated community. It would make it a safer, cleaner environment, and then...
I believe the feedback should be that we continue with option four and...
I'm talking there. I came here and talked to you, discussed the city. I talked to all the people.
So continue on with option four, and that if need be, we bring, come back for additional funding to maintain the safety and as much as possible, the stability of the issues down at River Cove.
I could support that.
Yes, well...
All right. We do not have to make a motion, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we continue on with item 5.1. 5.11, resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California approving the general plan amendment redesignation, redesignating 2.42 acres to MDR Medium Density Residential located at APN 132-036-003, a project known as Ward Villas.
Yes, Mayor, members of the City Council, this item has gone through the process and is now before you for consideration. Our planning and building manager, Donna Kenny, will be providing an overview of the project.
Do I have to read the second and the third?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll continue with the second and the third. Two, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank approving the request of Troy Wright for tentative subdivision map 01-2015 to subdivide 2.42 acres into 28 planned development, single-family residential lots located south of Ward Avenue, west of Roselle Avenue, APN 132-036-003. And three, first reading and introduction by title only of the ordinance of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California approving rezoning of 2.42 acres to planned development located at APN 32-036-003, a project known as Ward Villas. City manager?
Yes, and I apologize, I was trying to keep the meeting moving, moving forward, Mayor. I apologize for cutting you off in the middle of the announcements of the title. Donna Kenny, our planning and building manager.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Okay, so as you heard, the project consists of a general plan amendment, a rezone, and a vesting tentative map. The project location is off of Ward Avenue, that would be west of Roselle Avenue. Here's an existing aerial view, you can see the surrounding neighborhoods. So the general plan amendment, the current GP designation is low-density residential, which allows one to eight units per net acre. And the proposed GP designation is medium-density, which allows eight to 16 units per net acre. This project proposes 16 units per net acre, which is the top end of the MDR. The municipal code required the planning commission to find the project consistent with general plan policies when they heard this item at their regular meeting last month on the 19th. We discussed Design 1.6, which approved projects, plans, and subdivisions shall connect with adjacent roadways and stubbed roads, and Design 3.1, which the city will limit block lengths and encourage continuity of streets among neighborhoods to facilitate access. One of staff's concerns throughout this processing of this application had to do with connectivity. The, go ahead to the map here for you, and I'll go back to these. Okay. It's a lot farther than I thought, I apologize for that. Okay, there we go. So this, right here along the side, is Ward Avenue, and this would be a street that's proposed as Chavez Street, and it does dead-end at the back of the property. There is an emergency vehicle access here that lines up with Don Raffel Avenue right here. So as I mentioned, staff had concerns with this, whoops, with this street being a stub street and ending there. But in reviewing, the planning commission decided that since there was pedestrian access through the EVA, and that the fire department can also access that, they felt that the consistency with the general plan as far as accessibility and connectivity was correct. They believed that that did allow that to happen, or that is consistent with the general plan, excuse me. Okay, let's go back here. Okay, we also discussed Design 2.8, which the city will coordinate with transit providers, and as appropriate, require land and amenities. The, okay, this shows as inconsistent, I did, thought I changed this. It is considered consistent now with this general plan policy because the developer has agreed to create a pad along Ward Avenue for the schoolchildren to wait for the bus. Okay, this one, Design 3.2, the subdivision shall provide residential site and building design that contributes to an attractive pedestrian-friendly environment. As I mentioned, there was connectivity through the EVA to Don Raffel Avenue, and that approved plans, project, and subdivision shall minimize the visual prominence of garages and instead incorporate porches, stoops, active rooms, and functionally opening windows. As you will see when I get to the elevations, there are garages and windows that do face the street, and the developer has agreed to make sure that those are opening windows. So there will be eyes on the street for security reasons. Approved projects, plans, and subdivisions shall provide for the collection, conveyance, treatment, detention, and other stormwater management measures. The developer has added a stormwater basin to keep the water on-site for percolation. He will be working with the city engineer to ensure that it is appropriately sized, and therefore, the project is consistent with this policy. The city will encourage compact development to achieve more efficient use of resources. At a density of 16 units per net acre, this is a compact development, and therefore, the project is consistent with that policy. The city will consult with fire protection service providers in reviewing their proposals. Fire was consulted on this and has looked at the EVA for access, and they also recommended looped water lines for the project that connect to both Rocky Lane and Don Raffel Avenue. So therefore, it is consistent with this policy of consulting with fire protection service providers. The current zoning is single-family residential, and the proposed zoning is planned development. For planned development, staff requests amenities to compensate for the deviations from the standards. As you can see, like, for example, the lot size where R1 or low-density zoning requires 6,000 square foot minimum lots, the proposed standard for this is 2,730 square feet minimum, so it's smaller-sized lots. We have smaller-sized lot widths, smaller lot depth, higher density than the R1. The local street width is actually, these are switched, it should be 34 feet between curbs. And then, parking will be on one side of the street. So to compensate for those changes, those deviations in standards, the developer has agreed to provide enhanced landscaping throughout the subdivision, a colored concrete or brick crosswalk across Chavez where it meets with Ward Avenue, carriage-type upgraded garage doors, French doors instead of sliding glass doors in the living rooms, two benches at the stormwater basin, which is also landscaped, outdoor outlets to support Christmas lights and electrical appliances like mowers and weed whackers, and upgraded exterior light This is a photo, or a drawing of the vesting tentative map. And again, here we have the map with the lots. As you can see, the houses are on their own separate lots, but they would be considered like a duet because they are attached, and there are 28, plus the basin and the EVA. To kind of go back a little bit on the connectivity, there was a comment from Jilton, or we consulted with Jilton on servicing this area, and they have determined that it would be workable for them to bring their trucks down, back up into the EVA, and come out forward. And as I mentioned, the fire department has reviewed the EVA for their access to the subdivision. Here's some of the elevations of the Building 1. The actual front, the front, the front doors and such, actually, the houses will face each other. So as you drive down the street, you will be seeing the, this is considered the front elevation with the garage doors and then the windows that open for security purposes. Each set of elevations is slightly different. He has two different styles, or two different building types, and then two different styles of each building. So that was Building 1. Here's Building 2, slightly different colors, and then some of the architectural features are different from the Building 1. There's also an A side and a B side to each set of buildings. As you can see, more architectural differences. As far as environmental goes, this is an infill project, and so we are able to file a notice of exemption with the state for that. And I would be happy to answer any questions. As I mentioned, the planning commission reviewed this at their January 19th meeting, and they recommended that the city council approve this project. and they deter, they recommended that the city council approve this project.
This is a public hearing, so we'll take public comment. This is a public hearing?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Troy Wright. I am a principal with Windward Pacific Builders, where are the developer and builder of the project, and it's been a kind of a long road. We've been at this for over a year, probably now, and I think we've worked through all our issues, and we think this is a great project, great infill project for the community, and we look forward to moving forward. I do have a representative of my engineering firm. My architect couldn't be here tonight because he's newly-elected mayor of City Modesto, so, anyway, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
This is a public hearing? Hi.
I'm short. My name is LaCrisia Castillo, and I live at 2884 Don Rafael. My property butts up to the site that they're going to be building on. I talked to him about the fence and stuff, but my concern now, because I really didn't know how much noise that really was going to be out there with them doing the construction, like, 15 feet from my front door, and the thought of that, they're going to be shooting stucco out there, that's going to be all flying into my house. My front door faces that field, it's not in front of the house, my front door is on the side, so everything is going to be flying in there. My concern is, is the fence going to be put up before you start building?
It can be.
I would appreciate that. That's the only real issue, because like, I have breathing problems, and, you know, I use the oxygen machine a lot during the summer, because, you know, I can't breathe good. So, it's like, no, I can't breathe good. But I would really...
What, you mean, construction homes?
Yeah, the house, like, when you, the houses, your guys are going to be, it's like, 15 feet up from my property, my front door, other than that, it's like a sidewalk like this, because we've got zero clearance in our front door. And the noise, you know, there's going to be a lot of noise, you know? I didn't know how much noise it really was going to be until I went over by KB Properties, this building over there, off of Oakdale Road, and I went out there, you know, just curious, see how it sounds, got out my car and was listening to them shoot the stucco and watching this stuff fly all over the place, and it was a mess, you know? So, the idea I need is that I need to know that the fence is going to be up. This way, I could sheet my property to keep it from flying into my front door. You know, I wouldn't expect them to pay that because that's my property, you know? I'll have to be responsible for that, but I can't have all that stuff flying in there with my breathing problem, because they literally, I don't know if I would even be able to stay there in my home while they build, because of the problems I have with breathing. That was my issue. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing?
Yes, my name is Rosa Madrano, and I live at 2924 Ward Avenue. My concern is, he said he was going to build a fence around there. He really didn't say how tall the fence was going to be. He said he wanted to build a wooden fence. He didn't exactly say if it was going to be a redwood fence, or what kind of a fence. At this time, I have a, one of those plastic fences that they have, vinyl fence. I had a redwood fence, good redwood fence on there before. It rains, when it rains, like, this year it has rained so much, that rain, you know, it just dangled right there on the fence, and it brought it out, the redwood fence. So, that's why I went to the other type of a fence, and it has been successful. He said that he didn't like that fence, that he wanted redwood fence, but he didn't really say if he was gonna, if I was going to be able to keep my fence, how tall his fence is going to be, because I have a pool there, and by law, I have to have a six-foot fence there, enclosing that pool, and locked. And with four apartments, or houses, I don't know what you would call them, condos, condo homes, to the butt of my fence there, and if they have children, which they probably will, because they're two- and three-bedroom houses, I'm going to have kids trying to jump the fence. And another thing I wanted to ask the builder was, have they seen, or have they informed, or has the city informed them about the sewer problem we have there? The sewer that we have that's going down Ward Avenue is that red brick, what they used to use a long time ago, because I, for a fact, I know that because I had problems with my sewer, and I've had my sewer line from my home to Ward Avenue replaced with the PC pipe. And one, at one year, I had a backup, and I called a plumber, and the plumber came out, and he said, ma'am, there's nothing wrong with your plumbing, it's, the problem is out in the street because they use, that was clay, clay pipes, and those, after many years, they break up, and they back up. So, I noticed this past year, there was a kind of like an indention in the road there on Ward Avenue, and the city came out, they didn't really dig it up. What they did was just patch over it with blacktop. So, I don't know if it was a sewer problem, it was, you know, it had caved in, or what? And that's my, that's my concern. Are they, if there is a problem with the sewer going down Ward Avenue, are they going to be responsible, or is the city going to go in and put a whole new sewer? Are they going to have to tear up that Ward Avenue and put up new sewer? That's another problem that I, you know, after I came to this, you know, to the Planning Commission, I learned a little more about it, and I went home and I thought about all this, you know, what questions I wanted to ask before you, and the thing is parking, because, you know, there's going to be like 20, what, 27 homes?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight homes, and they're going to have two, three-bedroom homes. That's going to be two or three adults, and two or three automobiles going in and out that one property onto Ward Avenue, where children are going to be at, and, you know, more or less, it's going to be one way going in and one way coming out. You know, that's, that's another problem, and as it is, the kids, they live on Ward, they play in the streets, and just as I came to the meeting today, the police officers had come down to Ward Avenue before and gave the kids some cones, so they could sit out in the street, so they could play in the street when they played in the street. They had their three cones out there today. Can you imagine when 28, 29 more cars are going to come down Ward Avenue? Those kids, you know, in that area, I've been mayor over since 1960, I tell you the truth, and those kids play in the streets, and when that subdivision goes in, they're going to have more kids in the streets, because there's no, but no place to play if they only have 30 feet wide property, you know what I mean? 30 feet wide. Usually, we have 50 feet wide property. You know, that's another thing they have to look at, you know? I know it's, it's going to be nice and everything, and if it's an adult community, fine, but when they have kids, and many cars going in and out, and when they have parties, they're going to be out in the street, parking as it is, when my neighbors have parties, I can even get in my driveway sometimes, because, you know, there's cars lined up and down Ward Avenue. So, that's another thing to take into consideration, and the police are down that street quite often, which I appreciate, and 27 more homes down there, we're going to have more police presence. So, you know, these are all issues that, you know, you know, I'm trying to be a good neighbor, I know it's good for the community to have more property taxes coming in, but, you know, you have to look at that, too. And I've been there since, since I've been, since a long time, over 40 years, 50 years, so, because I bought that when I was very young, 20-years-old, bought the property there. So, I've seen it grown. It was, Ward was a dead-end before, and I seen it grown into the, it flourished into many houses back there. You know, I don't mind, but the thing is, this is too many homes, too small a property, in my opinion. That's all, thank you.
This is a public hearing?
Good evening, my name's Lydia Barron, and I live on 2949 Ward, and like Ms. Madrano, I have lived there since 1963, and it's been a very good place to live, and I commend the city for approving this development, for affordable housing, and I have also read more into the plans, and I just want to be able to know that they're going to put the children's signs and/or that it's, reduce the zone, because the cars come too fast, and kids like to play. And I would appreciate it if they could put the, a children's sign, if it comes from Rozell into Ward. And the other concern I have is with the width of the proposed road. The Chavez Avenue is too small, and I believe one side is not going to have parking area, and it might not be, I read that it's going to be enforced, but I know with time, people are going to use their garages as housing, and they're going to start parking on the, on the street, and I know it's going to become an issue later on. And my other question was also on the noise. I don't know if the city has ordinance on noise. Right now, we have a lot of noise at night, and in our area, there's a lot of senior citizens, so it's very hard for them to sleep with, they have all this music at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning, and I give up calling the police, because it doesn't seem to help. But with more housing, two-story housing, the noise is going to be, there's going to be more volume of that, and I don't know if the developer is going to have a, an order, a policy for them to not have so much, or a curfew. So, I do want to commend the city for the, the plans, but I would like to see the, the sign for the children, and something to do with the, the noise level. Those are my comments.
Any further public comment? Seeing none? I usually don't do it this way, but go ahead, respond.
Well, I just, I just wanted to address some of the comments. One, there was a comment about fencing. Obviously, it's going to be six-foot-high fencing, just normal residential fencing height. It's going to be wood fencing, we're going to grade as far as, you know, I guess there was a comment about puddling, but it's all FHA grading lots, everything's going to be drained towards the street, it's all, it's, it's, it is a private street. We are, the HOA is maintaining the street, the sidewalks, the storm drain system, the common areas, the front yards, and all the fencing that fronts the public streets, okay? So, and we've actually agreed to put a decorative masonry wall along Ward rather than wood or vinyl fencing to upgrade the look of it. So, the HOA is going to be maintaining and enforcing parking on the streets, things like that. So, I think this is going to be a big plus for the neighborhood, and, you know, I, I think that's not a question. As far as the width of the properties, yes, it's 30-foot wide, but the backyards, if you look at the plan, they're actually, have more backyard square footage than most of the R1 subdivisions that you see. We have between 16 and 20 feet backyards on these properties, and considerable backyards for children to play in. Let's see, what else was? The streets, again, you know, the street's width is two-foot difference. We have parking on one side, and plus, we have two cars in the driveway, two cars in the garage. So, anyway, that's, that's all I have to say, but if there's any other questions.
I have a question. Since this is an older section of town, a town, what about the sewer? We're getting ready to put in more, you know, more sewers with the new development, so would you have to reconstruct the current sewer system to make sure that it can handle the additional?
Well, I don't know that that's been an issue. Again, Rick with Hawkins and Associates is, is my engineer, and he can address that personally, but I have not heard that as an issue, but he can address it.
I believe the city should be addressing that. Okay, thank you. All right, I bring this back to the council for discussion. I was trying to do that. There's been a list of items, the noise and dust, that's, come on up, you're the one I'm talking to.
Great.
The noise and dust is something that can be addressed. Unfortunately, that is part of construction, and unfortunately, there's only so much that can be done, but I'm sure all steps will be made. As for the fences, there is an ordinance on the fences, which we, you will maintain, and you've stated that you will be a good neighbor and, and do so. The sewer is a city problem, is there any issues with the sewer in that area? I'm being told no. Traffic is always an issue anytime you have a change in, in patterns, or, okay, go ahead. Where's Parker Avenue, where is Ward Avenue, where's Don Rafael?
Okay, so, this is Ward Avenue, and then Chavez, the new street, will be down through here. This is Rocky Lane over here, where we don't have any rights of way to construct a road, and this is Don Rafael, and the lady that was up here, I missed her name, that has the vinyl fencing, she's right here, and the lady with the breathing issues, her home is right here. And I neglected to mention that the developer had gone into this area and gotten a petition from these property owners that they would like to keep this closed, and this woman in particular seemed to be quite pleased that there would be a decorative gate here with no parking signs, because right now, people park at this dead-end and kind of block her driveway, so that will resolve an issue for her. And I'm afraid, I'm not sure where the, the final lady, where her home is, but most of this property already is fenced, and the developer has agreed that as he goes through and develops it, if there is any damage to these fences, it will be replaced like-for-like. If you have a vinyl fence that's damaged, he will put vinyl there. If it's wooden, he will replace it with wooden. The homeowners' association will take care of the fences within this area that, that can be seen from the street.
The fencing that's on the perimeter, that will be a joint ownership, the current owners and the HOA for any repairs, correct?
That is my understanding, right.
Joint, if it's damaged in the future, the HOA and the current?
Right, like, current neighborhood, neighbor laws. Two neighbors share a fence, they both share the cost of replacing.
Make sure the HOA is a neighbor.
Yes. Well, we will have some CCNRs to review in the near future.
I know that children playing in streets is a commonplace when there is low traffic, but that's not a safe area to play, but I do like the signs that the city could erect for slow children, however.
Children at play.
Yeah.
Yes, I will work with Public Works on that.
The city does have, where's our chief? He left us. The city does have a noise ordinance.
Yes.
Oh, there you are, we do have a... You moved. We do have a noise ordinance, and if there is noise after 10:00 PM... And if there is noise after 10:00 PM, that is a cause for investigation. And I know not all the time can they respond to every noise complaint, but they have been. So, if there is noise, please continue calling on that. But the, usually in a HOA, you have stricter rules than you do in the city and that the HOA will be monitoring the activities of their HOA participants. So, that's usually, if there is a constant complaint about one individual, the HOA can take actions, which the city cannot. So, that may be a plus in that area for noise abatement after 10:00 PM as well as any of their other activity. Yes, ma'am?
As far as like them building, how late are they going to be building? You're saying 10:00?
No, 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 no. They won't be, they won't be building past 1700, 5:00 PM, usually. They, they have a workday of seven in the morning to five at night. They can't start before seven. And normally, they go home at, at five. Unless there are some, they have to finish one project at a certain time, such as concrete pouring and they, they're in the start of it, they're not going to break it open, break it apart to finish it the next day. They will finish that. But normally, by five in the afternoon, they're gone. And they're in the heat of the day, they're gone a lot of times before three. So, noise in the evenings is going to be those who are living there, not, not the construction. But a lot of these public comments are being, have been noted and will be part of the record.
If I might also mention, just in reference to the sewer question, the project is required to annex into a CFD that contributes to the maintenance of the city's facilities, sewer, water, roads off the project site in the future. So, they will participate in, in their impact on the city.
Comments or questions from the council?
I have a question. I go down Ward Avenue quite a bit and it's slowly becoming more and more, as people discover, used by people because it goes between Jackson Road and Roselle because of the increases that have happened over there. And I know that when the subdivision goes in, it's even going to get more use and with other things happening. If there were some way for this subdivision to go through for an outlet, I think it would be a plus for safety as well as handling traffic patterns that are existing and are going to continue to get worse with time between that Roselle and the other streets that are around it because of other developments and whatnot. So, one thing that, if we're not possible, I would like to see that done. The other thing is, you said that the fire department said that they could get a firetruck down there, okay. But from what I read, what, how big is the turnaround spot down at the end of the street?
There is no turnaround spot.
So, how's, how's a 50-foot firing, you're going to turn around?
They have access to the EVA. They would have a Knox block, Knox box there. So, they will be able to.
If that exists close enough, okay, okay, okay. That's what I wanted to clarify.
Right. They will be able to open this gate and then come into the subdivision or come into the subject, division and leave through that gate.
Okay. Because that's what that, that emergency equipment vehicle access point is.
Yes, sir.
Okay. But those are my concerns, the safety and the traffic patterns that are going to be created because I see a lot of problems in our community right now with traffic patterns. And sometimes they get backed up very quickly when the wrong things happen, like today when I was coming across town, traffic was backed all the way up because the train stopped from God knows where to God knows where all over this town. It took me forever to get around it. But, and that happens a lot in our community with different things. And I know this has gone additional traffic and I have concerns about that.
Any other comments? Okay, I'm going to bring it to the council then for action, which is first reading of the request for proposed resolutions to approve Troy Wright for a general plan amendment, rezone, investing tentative map. And conduct, conducted the public hearing for the first reading and introduction by title only, the proposed ordinance to be considered on March 8th, 2016. Do I have a second?
For clarification purposes, it'd be best to take a vote on each separate item and have a reading of, of the action for each separate item.
We're not approving any of the plans today, correct? No, no, as it says here, to approve the general plan amendment.
Right. The general plan amendment would be a second reading, but the, the tentative map and the, yeah, the, the two of them are resolutions that you would approve. The ordinance is the second reading.
First reading.
I mean, it's first reading, but we'll need a second reading.
Okay, I'll, I'll let you do the recommendation.
I move that we consider adoption of the proposed resolutions. Is that sufficient or?
No.
No.
You have to do one, two, and three.
Recommendation is to just, let's start with one, take the vote, then go to number two, and then number three.
So, what would be? I'll make a, I'll make a motion. I make a motion to approve one.
Which is the general plan amendment redesignation of 2.42 acres to medium-density residential.
Correct. I second that motion.
We have a motion to approve item 5.11 and a second.
Council members, Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
I'll make a motion that we accept the resolution as stated in item 5.1, number two. I'll second.
We have a motion to approve item 5.12 and a second.
Council members, Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
No.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-1.
I'll make a motion that we accept the first reading of item 5.1, number three. I'll second.
We have a motion to accept the first reading and introduction of item 5.13.
Council members, Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Item 5-2, ordinance of the City Council of the City of Riverbank amending the Riverbank Municipal Code by repealing in its entirety Section 5, 153.217, variance of Chapter 153, zoning of Title 15, land usage, and substitute it with the new Section 153.217 variance.
Yes, Mayor members of the City Council, this is an item that was initiated during a discussion of a variance back in the fall of 2015. And at that time, it was requested that the variance ordinance be adjusted so that the Planning Commission could approve those. So, this is, this item is a follow-up to that. Donna Kenny, our planning and building manager, will be presenting an overview of the proposed ordinance.
Hey, what she said. Yes, this would make the Planning Commission the deciding body of a variance request. The, the project that she spoke of was a, a one-foot variance for KB Homes. And it did come to you and it, in most cities, in the valley, in most cities I've worked with, the Planning Commission is the deciding body for conditional use permits and variances. And so, this would be in line with what other cities are doing. As she mentioned, this came up in November 2015. It does meet general plan consistency. The city will encourage through incentives, streamlining, flexible standards, and other means, development of employment generating uses. By allowing the Planning Commission to be the deciding body, you are, in effect, streamlining the process. You are shortening the public hearings from two to one and you are allowing, allowing a developer, in this case, to move forward and, with their construction jobs. Okay, there, this isn't a project per SEQA. It has no potential for resulting in a physical change in the environment. And the recommendation is to find the project exempt under SEQA and approve the, the first reading of the proposed ordinance amendment. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing? Do you have any public comment? I close the public hearing, bring it back to the council for discussion and/or action.
I move that we accept item 5.2.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve item 5.2 and a second.
Council members, Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
This is being held for March 8th.
Correct.
Finalization, okay.
Or adoption, consideration for adoption.
Item 5.3, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California to establish, amend, or authorize fees for the spring/summer 2016 City of Riverbank Recreation Program, parks, and facility use.
Mayor members of the City Council, Sue Fitzpatrick, our Director of Parks and Recreation, will provide an overview of the fees proposed for spring and summer of 2016.
Mayor members of the council, the City Parks and Recreation Department have completed our plans for the programs for the spring and summer. And we are bringing you fees to consider for those programs. Also tonight, what we wanted to do is talk about adjusting some fees for facility rental and having a seasonal increase in the gymnasium rental. So, the fee increase for facility rental, at the last, last time we were up here with fees, we were asked to come back and talk a little bit about a survey, maybe do a survey and see if we're charging, what we should charge for our facility rentals in comparison to others. And if there was some way we could come up with hourly or half-day rentals and also to look at, are we able to set aside some funding for facility renovation or improvements? So, we've done all that, so that'll be in the presentation tonight. Also, the seasonal increase in the gymnasium rental, that was initiated mainly by the suggestions from the Advisory Committee, Budget Advisory Committee. And that is because our, our portion of utilities is much higher in the summer that we pay for the school district, gymnasium that we have a joint, joint use of. It goes from 30% to 70%. So, the utilities are very high, the expense is very high for us in the summertime. So, looking at the recreation programs first, these are the programs that are the new programs we're offering this summer. And the Galt Color Run is the second time we've offered this. We've just raised the fees by $5. So, for adults, it'll be $30. For children, it'll be $12 to run the run. Craft classes, cooking camps are the mini-day camps that we have for the younger children and that'll be $25. Basketball camp, $65 for a week. Soccer camp is done by an outside organization, so we will have a 70-30 split with them, with the city receiving 30% of the fees. That would be the breakdown of $65 for three-to-five-year-olds, 40 for five-to-14-year-olds for a half-day, and 137 for five-to-14-year-olds for a full day. The teen rafting trip would be $15. We also have scholarships available, so everyone will be able to go that wants to go. Camping at Jacob Myers Park will be $5 for, for each teen, again with scholarships available. All of our other programs that we normally offer, such as aquatics, will still be at the, the prices that were set last year, no other increases. So, any questions about recreation programs?
Thank you.
And moving on to the facility fees, what we're proposing is for the community center to slightly adjust, the current fee is $1,200 for residents and proposed fee is $1,300. So, just adjusting up $100 more for non-residents from $1,500 to $1,600. And like I mentioned, we did do a survey, we are at the lowest. A lot of the facilities we surveyed have the base price, which is, which is not too far from ours, except all the services are not included. Our fee does include custodial and the site monitors or security. So, that's how we end up with the lower cost. The other adjustment we're proposing is for the nonprofit organizations who have the fee waiver, in the past, we've charged them $60 for custodial. We would like to adjust that up to $100. And that, that is the only fee they pay for the facility. That's mainly because of the, the rise in minimum wage and also the cost of custodial supplies that do add up. So, we're not really even making our, our expenses for the $60. The one clarification we were also hoping to receive tonight is if a nonprofit organization does have a fee waiver for an event for a day, we wanted to determine that it is for a day, not two or three days. So, if, say, someone does have the, their event on a Saturday and they want to come in on Friday, we would like to propose charging $100 per day or $25 per, per hour. So, say they want to come and set up Friday night to get a head start, it could be $25 an hour if they're just going to come in for a couple hours. If they wanted the entire day, it would be $100 a day. And we just didn't really have that pinned down. For the memorial services, we never had anything on the books for that type of a rental. And that's where we looked at the hourly or half-day charges. And we, we looked at the, the general use, the requests we have for rentals are usually for full days. So, we thought if we broke it down to an hour, it wouldn't be in our best interest or a half-day. But for memorial services, it would work to propose a fee of $400 based on three hours. So, that's why they're not renting the facility at the full price for the full day. And also, the meeting fee, $25 an hour, we'd like to raise to $50 per hour with a two-hour maximum. Again, there would still be no cost to the service clubs who are using our facility for meetings and they have waivers. Any questions on the facility fees?
I have a question on the memorial service fees. It seems like they're set differently than the other fees. And I'm just wondering what the difference in the price would be.
It's just a shorter amount of time. It would be based on three hours instead of a full day, which would be, well, it'd probably be considered a nonprofit group. That's kind of what we've been doing. If somebody comes to us now, when we didn't have anything on the books and wanted to reserve the hall for memorial service, we were giving the nonprofit rate of 350. So, it's really a, a $50 increase, but it's also putting something on the books. Does that answer the question?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
At this time?
Okay. So, the Scout Hall is the other facility. And again, just a slight increase of $200 for residents to 250, going from 350 for non-residents to 400. The custodial, custodial only with the service clubs currently are paying $35 for custodial and we're asking to raise that up to 50. And the memorial service in the Scout Hall building with a smaller group would be 200 based on three hours. And the meeting fee is currently $25. We just wanted to specify it would be a two-hour maximum. And again, no cost to the, the nonprofits using the facility for meetings. Any questions? Okay. And the last one is the gymnasium. Like I mentioned, our, our costs are based on the season. So, the winter rate would be $50 based on, on four hours, four-hour period, and then $25 per hour after four hours, with the summer rate going up to $100 based on four hours and $25 per hour after four hours. And that would help us cover the high utility bills that we receive for those months. Any questions?
At this time?
Okay.
This is a public hearing? This is a public hearing. Do we have any public comment? Close public hearing. Bring it back. Are there questions, comments, and/or actions from the City Council?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept this report. Sorry, I think we need a vote on it, though, don't we? If I put 3.
1.3.
For purposes of the motion, it'd be a motion for approval of the resolution.
Got it. I'd like to make a motion that we accept item 5.3 as stated in the resolution.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve the resolution 5.3 and a second.
Mending of those fees.
Council members, Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Sue.
New business, item 6.2, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, to establish a Facility Improvement Fund account for the City of Riverbank Community Center, Scout Hall, and Gymnasium Facilities.
Mayor, Members of the City Council, this is a quick follow-up to the previously considered item, and Sue Fitzpatrick will again be providing the report.
Mayor, Members of the Council, as you're aware, we have some facilities that need some renovation and improvement, and as part of the strategic plan, we've been trying to figure out ways to fund those improvements that are needed. So some of the buildings that we've been talking about is the community center. We had the architect come and give us a conceptual design and cost estimate for the replacement of the kitchen and the floor, and actually a renovation of the facility. The tables and chairs are in need of replacement, and for the Scout Hall, it often needs repairs and improvements, as well as the community gymnasium. We're responsible for paying half of any of the repairs that take place in the gymnasium. So it's proposed as part of this city's strategic plan that we set aside a portion of each facility rental fee that we just discussed to establish a Facility Improvement Fund as follows. So the full rental fee at the community center would have a $400 set aside of a $1,300 rental fee, and the non-resident would be a $500 set aside of a $1,600 rental fee, and a service club that pays a $500 fee would have a $150 set aside. And then with the Scout Hall, we would do the same thing. A portion of the full rental would be set aside, as well as the non-resident and service club portions. And for the gymnasium, the for-profit groups would pay $50 set aside of a $200 rental fee. So what we would be doing is, it's already pretty much in place in our rentals, because a portion of the rental fee should always go towards some of these improvements or depreciation, but this way, we would be actually designated, and it would go into a fund that would be specified as the Facility Improvement Fund. So what I did to get at these figures is I just kind of took the direct costs and the indirect costs and figured out what we could afford to set aside and still pay for our usage. And that's how I came up with that. And proposing that would be, it's not going to solve all of our problems, but it will have a financial impact of decreasing somewhat this general fund subsidy that we'd be counting on, because we would be setting those funds aside, and we would be able to replace some of the equipment, and also maybe do, if we don't get grants, which I'm hoping we're going to get, I'm very hopeful, especially for the CDBG funds coming up, that maybe we will be able to put that towards the community center. Maybe this would be part of the match funds that we accumulate. But we'll also have to have some other funding sources, because this would just be a portion of it. You might be wondering why we don't have the pool facility there. The reason for that is, the way that the Riverbank Pool operates is, we only recover 60% of our expenses. So setting aside would not work for that type of a facility. And we are, Donna and I are very hopeful that we will be getting, meeting the criteria for the Housing Related Parks Program that we researched this year, and be able to put funding for that towards the pool locker rooms. So we're still worried about that, it's just not in this plan here. Any questions?
Questions?
Just had a comment. It's kind of nice to see in the reports where it says a positive impact on the general fund, so you don't see that very often in some of these. I think this is a great idea. I appreciate your sharing that with us tonight.
Are these funds already set up by a mayor seller? This is a mayor seller question. Are these funds set up to where they can be audited every year? She said that with enthusiasm. Okay. All right. Do we have a public comment? Any comments from the public on item 6.2? Seeing none, I bring it back to the council for either further discussion and/or recommendation.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept item 6.2 as stated.
A second.
We have a motion to approve and a second item 6.2.
Council members, Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Oh, there, let me read it. Recommend City Council review and provide feedback on the removal of ash trees along Crawford Road to prevent ongoing damage to sidewalk and other infrastructure now and in the future, and review design concept for new landscaping plan. Before we get started with item 6.3, if this is a city action requirement that if a tree starts damaging a sidewalk, we need to review how we bring things to the City Council. If something is being damaged, we take care of the items that are being damaged immediately to prevent further damage. The City Council works very slowly, as everything else in the city. So if you have a tree damaging a sidewalk five years ago, and you don't take actions for five years, that sidewalk's going to be damaged more. That being said, I'm interested in the report.
Mayor, Members of the City Council, actually, this is generally an informational item, requesting your feedback on the proposal before you for some of the reasons that you mentioned, Mayor. It is something that has been of concern, because for the public perspective of it, of removing trees, that generally creates some controversy and concern, and so wanting to make sure that the City Council was aware of what the plan was, the publicity plan, and can just get your feedback in terms of kind of where we're going. In that regard, the reality is, we do need to do this, and unless the City Council expresses just severe dissatisfaction with the plan, we anticipate moving forward. If, and it doesn't sound like there will be based on the mayor's comments, but if there is, we would come back with a follow-up item to confirm that you didn't want us to take action, as opposed to requiring confirmation that we should take action. So your point is well said, Mayor. We are moving forward. It is a concern. Let Kathleen Kleek, our Manager for Administrative Development Services, Administrative Division, provide an overview of this plan, and look forward to your comments.
Oh, it's your turn.
It's my turn. Good evening, Mayor, and Members of the City Council. As like the city manager said, tonight is not an action item, it's just kind of an explanation and to show you what's going on out there, and also for the public to know. This is a landscape and lighting area, therefore, we're using landscape and lighting funds to fix this issue, and so we want to make sure that you, as well as the public, are understanding what we're planning on doing. So the project area is Crawford Road from Antique Rose to Squire Wells. And unfortunately, 16 years ago, when the landscape plans were developed, landscaped architects all over were promoting the ash tree. So as you can see, in Modesto and around the county, there's a lot of sidewalk that's pulled up because of the trees that were planted at that time. They've since learned that it's not a good tree to plant, especially when you don't have enough room for your sidewalk and your infrastructure. So the current issues, the roots from the raywood ash trees have damaged the sidewalk, curb, and gutter. The irrigation system is damaged. The raywood ash trees are young and will double in size, which will continue to cause more damage. So in addition to the hardscape damage, Arborist has determined that the ash trees are infested with a wood-boring insect called a clear-wing moth. So these insects bore into the bark, and eventually kill the tree. There is treatment for that, but with the hardscape issues, it's not something that we were recommending or wanted to look into. So there's some photos of current conditions of the damage. The damage is starting, basically, right now, it's irrigation damage. The roots are starting to crawl into some of the, as you can see, the irrigation area. The curb and gutter is fine right now. Some of the sidewalk has been lifted. Right now, we can grind that and fix it. We're not having to pull up any sidewalk and replacing it at this time. Here's another photo here. There's some more photos, and then there's the...
One, please.
Yes.
If you look to the fence side, you see some of the roots that have gone under.
Mm-hmm.
Some of the fencing along there is being damaged by the roots being cracked and being lifted.
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
Yes, I've been very familiar with that since January.
And here's the irrigation box where the roots have just kind of crushed it. So the plan for removal is to remove the 41 raywood ash trees along the south side of the road, remove the 23 raywood ash trees along the north side of the road, and grind all the stumps and roots in the grass area. So the irrigation plan is to install the rainbird tech line, which we've installed on Oakdale Road, instead of having sprayheads that are spraying into the street. The landscape plan is to convert to turf area to a ground cover, so we wouldn't have to do the mowing and damage irrigation through the, with the mowers. Plant 32 15-gallon pistachio trees, and a lot of those pistachio trees are already out there, so if an ash tree has been damaged, or we took it out for, if it was diseased, we were already replacing it with this pistachio tree. So those trees will just continue to be planted. And then put in the 1-gallon jasmine, and that would be the ground cover, and then 40 yards of mulch to top dressing. So this is a photo that I got. It's a 40-plus-year-old pistachio tree, and there's no damage to the sidewalk at all, and it's really close to the sidewalk in this photo. So I just wanted to show that to you, because that was one thing that we were researching, making sure that whatever we put in there isn't going to cause damage, because these trees right now are only 16 years old, and they are causing this damage. So I wanted to throw that in there. This is what the jasmine will look like, and that's the ground cover. And then the irrigation system is the tech line that we would put in there. So these are pictures of Insalida on Peron Road, where the county had ash trees, and they left them for a very long time, and the repairs were 150-plus, 150,000-plus to fix all of the sidewalk damage. So I wanted to show what we want to prevent from happening, so that's why we need to get these trees out of there. Now's a good time to take them out, there's no leaves. It should be a quicker process, cleaning up. Grover can start in two weeks, if, you know, if the plan, if you, like, the trees that we have selected and the ground cover instead of the grass. Here's another picture of the damage out there before they fixed it. And this is a breakdown of the cost for tree removal, installation of the tech line, and then the plant installation. And these funds already were budgeted in the L&amp;L budgets that you approved back in June. So the project timeline and the detour, the south side of Crawford will be closed for two and a half to three days, and the north side would be closed for one and a half to two days. Both sides will not be closed at the same time. So, and the stumps will be grinded immediately after, so there's not going to be, you know, once they cut them down, then they're going to have to come back to do the stumps. They're going to do everything all at one time. So the outreach to the residents, we'll be mailing a letter to each resident in Crossroads for the reason for the removal, the plan for the new landscaping and irrigation, detailed schedule, detour map with dates of the road closure, contact information for questions, and then postings on Crossroads and City Facebook pages, and information posted on the city website. So there's some future tree removals. As the current ash trees are damaged or diseased, we've been replacing them with the pistachio. But there are a few that still need to be removed down the other end, which is Saxon Way and Prospectors Parkway, and those will be done after the next fiscal year, so most likely, we could get those scheduled in July and August to get those trees taken out. So any questions or comments?
Question?
Yes.
What's the average life of the pistachio tree that you're going to put in?
That's a good question. I can get that answer for you.
Okay, and do you know how big eventually they get?
I don't. The one picture that I had was, it was 40 years old, and it's, I don't know exactly what the, how big that is, but if you could look at the roof, yeah.
It looks pretty. It's purty.
It's the same tree.
I will get that information for you.
You know, scenic, between, or near Rose and Oakdale Road, they can get pretty tall. It looks like the same tree.
I've said my piece. Is there anybody else? Anyone from the public wish to make comments? Thank you. Let's bring it back, and if there's no action item on there, the feedback is proceed and minimize the damage.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Item 7.1, staff comments.
Mayor, Members of the City Council, Michael Riddell, our Manager of Public Works, Public Works Superintendent, will be providing an overview of the city's January 2016 water production numbers.
Evening, Mayor, Council members. So January 2016's numbers were as follows. We pumped a total of 57.4 million gallons of water, of which 5.7 million was used by industrial and commercial, and which 51.6 million gallons was used by the residents. That equaled out to 72 gallons per person per day. And if you take a look at our January 2013 numbers, that means we increased our water usage by 41% over the numbers in January 2013, which was 51 gallons. I still will caveat it with, when, our production numbers are based on flow meters on the wells, so when the wells run, and that's how we get our numbers. And also, would like to caveat it with, that you're talking about 71 gallons per person per day. per day, I think that's a pretty low number. And I, we, going into this through November, December, January, and probably February too, will probably still see the same thing, because traditionally, you're not using a lot of water in those months, unless, of course, the sun comes out and we end up with 85 degrees through February and into March type thing, then things could change. Any questions?
Is what it is.
That actually concludes staff comments for the evening. I wish we had better news.
Council comments, Councilmember Jones Cruz, please.
I just wanted to, I have a couple things, I just wanted to state for the record, I didn't get a chance to say it earlier, although I did have quite a few comments about River Cove, I too wanted to go with option four, and I didn't get a chance, because of all the commotion, to feel like I got to say that. I would also like to thank all the folks that came out from River Cove, and all the folks that live in, you know, the Ward Project, that they came out and spoke. It's really important that you guys share what you have with us up here, we value your opinions, we want to hear what you have to say. I know for some folks, it might be something new, and intimidating at times, but I just want to encourage folks that, to come out and do that, and I really appreciate everyone's participation in that public forum. And the last thing I'd like to say this evening is, I just wanted to personally thank our City Manager for her dedication and professionalism that she bring to this job, and I just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell?
I won't repeat everything that my colleague said next to me, because you don't want to hear it, but I agree with everything that she said. Likewise, I think Sue did a very good job on the increases that she did with the facilities, and the public should know that a lot of this is due to increases in labor, because the minimum wage laws have changed, and we have a lot of minimum wage employees that we have to go along with, whether we like it or not. Other than that, just everybody be safe, till the next meeting.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez, please.
I just want to thank everyone for coming out to the meeting, I think it's really important that we have your input to help us make the decisions, we need to hear from you, and I thank you for that, and that's it for tonight.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Tucker?
I agree with all the previous comments, and want to additionally thank staff for their wonderful, all the wonderful work they do, and the reports that they present to us at these meetings, it's always good and helpful information.
Thank you very much. I have just one specific comment about the archiving of materials, it was, came to my understanding today, that we're only archiving the agendas and the videos for the City Council meetings for three years. There was archiving of the materials, I know, through 2008, and some of them even went back as 2006. Is there a way that we could have those saved, and not have them destroyed?
Yes, I'll double-check on that, but there's no intention to destroy documents, particularly public agendas and such, so I'll, the city clerk and I will...
Well, I know the agendas will be saved, I meant them being available online, or somehow getting a hold of, somebody can come in and take a look at the discussions behind, the actual discussions behind why a decision was made, instead of just the minutes.
We can certainly revisit that, yes.
I appreciate that, that, I went back online, taking a look at some of the things that I wanted to research for an event coming up on the 24th, that everyone has seemed to neglect, what I can too, and I could not get the information. So, with that, there is an event coming up on the 24th, since staff has neglected it, please come to the Galaxy Theater, and we'll have a nice little reception, and I'll have question and answers, I'm sure, okay?
Wonderful speech that you're going to write.
I have to write it.
At this month?
We didn't want to...
And then after the orders, you can go to Chipotle, and possibly Dicky's, because both of those are supposed to open up in the next week or so, so it should be some, be positive.
Okay, item eight, consistent of item 8.1, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9 Alpha. Name of case, Barnum Construction, Inc. versus City of Riverbank, Court of Appeals of California, 5th District, case number Foxtrot 058692, and case number Foxtrot 059499. Before we go into, oh, an item 8.2, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9 Alpha. Name of case, City of Riverbank versus Riverbank Oil Transfer LLC, Stanislaus County Superior, case number 2012779. Before we go into closed session, the public will have the ability to comment on closed session items as set forth in the agenda. Do I have any public comment? Seeing none, we are now, the meeting now adjourned for closed session. The City Council meeting is re-adjourned, and number nine, report from closed session, item 9.1, report on closed session, item 8.1, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, and direction has been provided to staff. Item 9.2, report on closed session, item 8.2, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, again, direction has been provided with, to staff. With that, we adjourn the meeting. Thank you, and good night.